I have six o'clock, I'm sorry, 5:30. It was straight up, 5:30. I will call the special common council meeting to order. Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebohn.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Laurel.
Here.
Ten present, all current council personnel are present and we will move on to our agenda. The second item on the agenda is presentations by candidates for appointment for the District Four alderperson and interview questions by the current council members, followed by action to replace the fourth district alderperson. Heidi Oberstadt, who has resigned effective yesterday, we thank her very much for her service. At this point, is there anyone other than the three candidates who wishes to speak on, it looks like it'll probably be item number three, but either agenda item? We need to try and register you ahead of time, we're pretty liberal with the ability to speak on the items, but is there anyone other than the candidates who wishes to speak on either of those two agenda items? Okay, your name, sir?
Lynn. Lynn Shuro.
Okay. And we'll get you down there, Lynn. Anyone else? Your name, ma'am?
Chai Wu.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Kelly Wu.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Danny Ward Houski.
Okay. Anyone else? And as I said, we're pretty liberal with the public's ability to speak at these meetings. So, before we get started with the candidate presentations, I would ask Clerk Petruski to go over the, what's exactly gonna happen tonight?
After the presentations, both by the public and the candidates, and question and answer period, then there will be written ballots distributed to the ten alderpersons. On the first ballot, once they're collected in the bucket over there, the city treasurer and myself will tally the ballots. With the three candidates, if the least candidate getting the least amount of votes, if nobody receives a majority, in this case it would be six, if nobody receives a majority, the candidate with the least amount of votes would be eliminated and the remaining two candidates would move on. If there's a tie for the least amount of votes, the mayor is given an option to vote if he so chooses for one of those two candidates to break the tie, until we get a majority vote for the replacement alderperson.
Okay. Alder Dalton?
Question, according to the research I did into the legal, it cannot be a secret ballot, so we are required to put our names attached to our votes. Is that correct?
I would ask the city attorney to speak on that. We have had written secret ballots.
But specifically for this appointment, this vote?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I can certainly take some time to look at that. I imagine you'll have a little bit of time, so.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Shore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in terms of asking questions of the candidates, I don't know what kind of, how exactly it's supposed to work, but if we have, like, a question to go to all three, how is it gonna work?
So, the way that I would run this is that we would have the presentation by all three candidates first, and we would give the council options to ask questions. If your question is for all three, you would ask it for all three. If it's for one specific, you would ask that person, and all of the candidates will be presenting at the podium, or lectern, sorry, John, the lectern, so that it's on the microphone.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the procedure? And Alder Dalton, we're gonna get that question answered for you. Okay? All right. Oh, that's quick.
19.88 sub 1. Thus, otherwise specifically provided by statute, no secret ballot may be utilized to determine any election or other decision of a governmental body except the election of the officers of such beating, uh, body in any meeting, for instance, selection of the council president. Specifically, there is an attorney general opinion that states a common council may not vote to fill a vacancy on the common council by secret ballot. That's about as on point of an attorney general opinion as you're gonna find.
Yeah, if that, there's a little gray area there, right?
Nope.
No, I know.
This is the only time you ever hear me say it.
Yes. So, Alders, when you get your ballots, you will write your name first, last name would be fine. I would prefer not first. Yeah, I think we're okay with first names. Last name would be preferred. And then, the candidate to whom which you are voting, for whom which you are voting. Okay? All right, so, we will start with our three candidates, and Makira, you are going first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Makira Zara-Zua, and I know that's a lot to say. I do go by M. as well, if that's a little easier. I assure you, Makira is my real name. And I'm excited for this opportunity to interview for the position of fourth district alderperson. I've had the privilege of calling Stevens Point my home since 1996, when I came here for college and realized that I did not want to live anywhere else. I did move out of the city once, and I felt like I was worlds away, in Whiting. It was a great day when I was able to move back to the north side, that's where I feel at home. My husband can attest to the fact that I'm unwilling to move to any other part of the city, even a few blocks away, and I definitely never want to be outside of the city limits again, live outside of the city limits. I think it's apparent from my resume that I care about people. I'm the core of who I am as a social worker. I really, this is not superficial, I truly care about the people who I meet. I wanna know who they are, I wanna know where they came from, what they value, I want to know what their, what challenges they're facing. And I also hold a lot of different roles. I'm a parent, I'm an employee, I'm a current student, I'm a person of color, I'm a family member of a person with a disability, I'm a homeowner, and I feel that all of these positions help me to understand a lot of different viewpoints. I can build positive relationships with people even when I don't see eye to eye with them, because I see the value in every person. I recognize that as an alder, I will not be able to make everyone happy, but I know it will be my job to represent the needs of my constituents as best I can. I believe my strongest skill would be being able to research a topic and be able to make educated decisions, and also being able to provide education to the constituents to help them understand the issues. As far as what I feel we need to work on, I can say that I'm overall really satisfied with the work that the city council has done. With my background of working with people with disabilities, I am interested in how we can improve our city bus system and promote ridership, because the service is crucial to the livelihood of so many people in our community. I also would like to see more affordable housing for people, since this is a continuous need. Our city has so many amazing attributes, from the parks to the Green Circle Trail, our schools, the diversity of businesses, and of course, the biggest and best trivia contest in the world. I bring a compassion for people, a willingness to learn, the ability to research, and most of all, the desire to be a voice for District Four, while also working collaboratively with the city council, to ensure that Stevens Point continues to be a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wazella, you're up next.
My name is Brian Wazella, and I reside at 717 Washington Avenue. I have been a resident of the District Four now for fifteen-plus years, father to three amazing boys, aged 22, 20, and 16, a mentor to our goddaughter, aged 10, going on 20, and a husband to my angel Jennifer, for 26 years now. I love the outdoors, camping across this great state, boating on the rivers, lakes, fishing when I can, and walking around chasing a little white ball, you know what is golf, and all this area has to offer. I decided to put my name back in the ring one more time. Some of you may remember that myself and Heidi competed for Mike Weez's position when he was elected mayor. This city is important to me, my family resides here, we plan on being here for a long time to come. In this job, you are elected to listen to your constituents and make the best decision, and that is exactly what I plan on doing. In this job, we are here to do the will of the people of your district, to listen, come to a conclusion that benefits masses and not just the individual. Sometimes that means you avoid the things you're opposed to, but you do it at the will of your constituents. I attended college at Mississippi Tecton College, Wisconsin Rapids, graduated with an associate's degree in civil engineering. I saw a lot of this country, one construction project at a time. I worked on heavy highway, roadway projects, all over the Midwest for private, government, and military contracts. I was employed in this field for 14 years, but with the physical demands of this job catching up to me, I knew it was time for a change. I needed a job to keep me home more than I was. So, a new path was started. For the past 15-plus years, I have a very satisfying job as an investigator for the law firm, Aheupian Abraham. I have helped and listened to thousands of clients all over the state, and yes, I do believe listening is a skill that one must possess to do this job effectively. Also, after the events of 9/11, I embarked on a new journey. I became a volunteer firefighter for the village of Whiting, from about 2002 to 2010. I put my blood, sweat, and tears into this job, training, preparing for the worst in a person's life, and in some cases, just giving them a shoulder to lean on. Although a short career in the firefighting field, I determined that a claustrophobic firefighter was not a good mix, and I did not want to put the lives of my fellow brothers and sisters at risk, so because of this, I regrettably stepped down. So, who is Brian Wazella? Like I said earlier, I enjoy fishing, boating, camping, golfing, almost everything I do is always family around me. Our love of the area and having family close by is what brought us back to the Stevens Point area. My children have gone to school here, they work and volunteer in our community. I have helped with our church's Thanksgiving basket event started by my wife back in 2009. I have been honored to play a small role in this event, helping not only people in our church, but people all over Stevens Point and beyond for 10 years now. This event is special to me. All the volunteers helped 400 families not only have Thanksgiving baskets, complete with turkey stuffing and all the fixings, but personal items as well. This meal allows them to have a holiday meal in their home with family that they might not have because of financial difficulties. This is the time to reflect on God's grace, the blessings of having family close by. I am a strong-minded and sometimes yes-pig-headed individual. I also have learned through my life experience to listen above all else. I have many opinions on how or which direction the city should move in, but I admit I do not know it all. I plan on listening to my constituents and my fellow alderpersons. This job is not a me, me, me job. I will listen with an open mind and come to a conclusion that benefits the whole picture and not just mine, even if that means voting yea or nay on an issue I do not agree on. As stated earlier, listening is the key to do this job properly. One of the more polarizing debates we read in recent times is the Stanley Street corridor. I wanna say this right now, I am not against bicycle lanes in the city of Stevens Point, but I am opposed to a reduction of a four-lane major artery to a two-lane road. Now, if my constituents want this to happen, to be going on what they call the road diet, that is the way I will vote, the way it is supposed to be, representing your district. I will end this by saying this is the job you're never going to win everyone over, you have to, you have to have thick skin and not take things personally. I look forward to working with each and every one of you for the remainder of Heidi's term and onto the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Will, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and fellow citizens. Thank you for considering me for the position of fourth district alderperson. If I'm selected, I'll listen to the residents of the fourth district, and I'll work hard to make the best decisions for the district and for the city. In my job at the DNR, one of my main duties was to work collaboratively with individuals who had projects that would affect waterways or wetlands, and work with them to modify the project if need be, so that it would meet their needs, and also would meet the requirements of state law and state regulations. And I think that that job, that experience, would transfer well to being a liaison between city residents and city government. There's a lot of points in common there. Some issues that I feel are really important to our city are having beautiful parks that provide opportunities for everyone to enjoy the activities in the outdoors and in our city, providing a variety of transportation alternatives for everyone to use, providing a variety of affordable housing opportunities, and also spending a lot of effort or a lot of emphasis on conserving energy and conserving resources. This is gonna be extremely important in the coming years, as our entire society moves toward renewable energy. One trend that concerns me about Stevens Point is, if you look at the census data for the last several years, every year since 2010 through, I think, 2017, Stevens Point has lost population, except for one of those years, I think, 2012 or 2013. This is a trend that's very common, small places are losing population, people are moving to the bigger cities, but it's not a, not a sustainable trend for small places like Stevens Point, so it's something we need to work to reverse. Another democratic, or demographic trend that concerns me is, I wonder if we're losing the younger demographic, the younger people in our community. I've seen an awful lot of instances among my own friends where people grow up, they get their education either here or someplace else, then they move away. And, again, if you look at the census data, well, we do have an awfully big youth cohort, but that's because of the university. If you subtract the university population from, from what I see, it seems like we have a gap in that younger cohort, and these are the people who are so important to maintaining a dynamic community, these are the people who start families, start businesses, and really provide a lot of dynamism. So, you know, what can we do to retain and attract more of this demographic to our community? Well, really, the city's done a lot of excellent things along those lines, like the plans to redevelop the Lullaby site, the old Kmart site, the twin homes on the Grant School site, the plans for the Division Street corridor, so these are good things, we need to keep doing those and do more of those things to maintain the vitality in our community. Another thing I think we could be doing is try to increase the ties between the city and the university. So, if we could attract university students for volunteer opportunities in the city, maybe for internships, and to try to promote city events to the university community, to try to have less of a division or isolation between the university community and the community as a whole. Hmm, let's see, I think that's most of my major points, so, yeah, I'll close with that. I'd just like to say that if you choose to honor me by making me the fourth district alderperson, I'll do my very best to listen to the residents, to represent them, to help with their concerns with the city and with the neighborhood, and I'll work hard to make the very best decisions for the future of Stevens Point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I imagine most of our alders have questions, so we can start on this end. Alder Jennings, do you have any comments or questions for the candidates?
Yes, I have two questions for Mr. Wazella.
Okay.
Mr. Wazella, it sounds like you are, you are opposed to representative government, is that based on your comments, is that correct?
We're gonna, we're gonna have you go up to the microphone, I guess.
Oh, sorry, can you repeat that, please?
It sounds like from your comments, you are opposed to representative government, is that correct?
No, I, I believe that representing your constituents is what I plan on doing. I guess, I don't, if you could please define the, your term?
Well, we have a system of representative government, that's why we elect officials, but it sounds like you're advocating for direct government, which is, the people that you represent will basically vote through you. You said that you will, even if you oppose something, you will...
Okay. Yeah, I believe the, the majority of the people have a say in it, if, I don't wanna go by just my opinions on what it is, I represent the people of the fourth district, if I'm, if I get the seat, I represent the people of the fourth district. If I want something to go one way and everybody else wants to go a different way, I should be voting for the people who hopefully will elect me in the future. So, I guess in the way, yes, I will agree to go the way of the people, and they have their voice through me. That's the way I believe this should be set up, where if your constituents come to you and say, "I am against this particular project," and you have 90% against, say 10% for, in my opinion, you should be voting the way of your constituents, because that's the way they want it, unless you have, you know, a better insight and you can explain to them, but I believe you should go with what your constituents want.
All right, I have another question.
Sure.
I would be interested to know how you're going to survey every single person, but that's an aside. It's pretty common knowledge that public comments on Facebook are a kind of resume, and you have recommended in the past a parking ramp on quote, either behind the library or on the southeast corner of the Shopko lot, and since you are running for council, I assume you have knowledge and interest in the city budget, and parking ramps cost approximately $20,000 per stall, and so I'm interested to know how you plan to pay for this parking, parking ramp.
I don't plan on paying for it, it was just a conversation between friends on Facebook...
No, it was a public exchange.
Okay, okay, it was a comment I made on there, and yes, I do believe there should be a parking, or more parking available for downtown. The way it is right now is very limited parking, and especially with the parking, I believe it's called the kiosk, so what are we planning on putting it down Main Street for, in front of restaurants? You're gonna take away even more parking. So, a parking structure, more parking in the area, yes, I do believe that should be there. How to pay for it? I wasn't planning on deciding how to pay for it, that's a decision made by the council, and hopefully with state help, but I don't, I'm not gonna pay for it. But I mean, it was just a comment stating that, yes, we need more parking in that area.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Alder, any additional questions?
That's it.
Okay, Alder Shore, any questions, comments?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
First of all, thanks to all three candidates. This is a terrific pool, and appreciate your interest in serving and your passion for the community comes through for all three of you. What I wanted to ask is, we vote on all kinds of things, a lot of different kinds of issues, and I would just be interested in each of your views, just of how the council member role looks to you in terms of the different kinds of decisions we make, and which have seemed to you to be the most important to focus on or the most essential to our role.
Okay, and I assume it's for all three candidates?
That is, absolutely, yeah.
Correct? So, we will mix up the order, and we will have Will go first this time, followed by Brian, followed by Makira, and then the next questions and so on. We'll keep that, try and keep that rotation, if I can keep it straight in my head.
Okay. Could you please clarify the question a little bit, what you feel is the most important function for the alderperson?
We take a lot of votes every month, in different kinds of matters. And, I mean, a lot of them are just, can we kinda churn through, some of it could just come through the consent agenda, but my question is about, of all the different kinds of decisions that we make, which seem to you to be the ones that are kind of most central to our role in what we do? We, you know, what's the essence of, of our job in terms of deciding different matters?
Having participated in some of the meetings for the plans to revitalize North Division Street, I think that probably the planning aspects of how the city makes decisions for what the community's gonna look like in the future must be the most important. In second place, probably I'd put budget decisions, because the budget is really how anybody expresses its priorities.
Thanks.
Makira? Did I screw it up already?
Yeah, you did.
Jesus. I am so sorry, I am so sorry.
Someone else to prepare for.
Yes, three letters and I screw 'em up.
I guess I would look at it, you know, the budgets, transparency, letting the people see what is going on. The more transparent you are, I think most of the questions are, get answered right away. You know, the Division Street corridor, I think that's a long time coming, we've been planning on it for a long, long time, and eventually when it gets done, it's gonna be a trouble way through that process, but once it's completed, I think it's gonna be a benefit to the city. It's just, you know, the, going through the phases, I think is a good thing. So, I like, I like the transparency and how that thing is being done.
Now Makira.
Okay, so as far as what's most important in those difficult decisions, I think everything that is done here generally is important. I mean, there's not one thing, you know, we want retention of students when they graduate, how do we improve our community, how do we have roads that are safe and bridges that are safe? I mean, everything, all of them are important, and a lot of times, even if they seem really minor, you know, talking about the parklets, well, we're talking about any time with green space, and how do we promote businesses but respect businesses, how do we have more green space to improve our mental health as a community and have safe recreational places? I mean, I think there are, all of it is important. Just one thing I feel I want to say about it is, I recognize that what we see at, like, the city council meeting, when you're watching the video, like, that's the end result of that decision, and realizing there's so much that goes into that, so much research is done, and planning and discussions before it comes down to that decision made at that meeting. And I think a lot of times the public thinks there were only a few minutes of discussion, and then they decided, and now my taxes are going up, whereas really, there's so much that goes into that, that's, it's not just a simple decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alder?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, Alder Nabel.
Yes, thank you. This is a question for all three candidates, and thank you again, all three, for coming forward and going through this ruling type of interview, it would make me crazy. I think I'd rather go through an election. I don't know yet, not sure, it just seems like both of us...
Don't look at that opportunity too.
But anyway, my, I live in District Three, and my district is around the campus, and one of our biggest areas, and I don't think it's only in my district, seems to be the issue of housing and property maintenance, maintenance, sorry, get that word out. So, one of the ways that the city does deal with property maintenance is through their city ordinances. They have them for a reason, and they've thought out, it's not something we wrote up, it's something that's already been there, other cities have. I would like to ask if, what your thoughts are on how ordinance, how important our city ordinances are in being, is the right word I'm looking for, you guys, brought forward and dealt with, and the ideas of trying to improve our neighborhoods that are, neighborhoods that are mixed, and I think that's a great thing to have, but I also see where we get problems where it gets overly one side, and I think what I'm asking you is that, how do we work more with the ordinances and with landlords to try to come up with a way to improve our neighborhoods instead of kind of slowly eroding them?
Okay, we'll start with, correct me if I'm wrong here, Brian, then Makira, and then Will.
I think we have to do a lot of common sense and safety-oriented. With landlords and some of the apartments, or the houses that are used for apartments around the area, when my wife and I moved back to the area and we were renting, it was very difficult to get anything done. The duct could have been dilapidated, where you could fall through it, and there was really nothing there to help. I believe there should be a, an area of, you know, more comprehensive to make sure the safety factors are there, I mean, they should have, to keep the house the same way I have to keep my house, you know, siding, yard, whatever, so I believe if it's done with common sense, safety-oriented, I believe it's a good thing to move forward with ordinances and keep them there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Makira?
So, I appreciate the question. I don't have a very solid answer on it, because I don't know a lot about the ordinances affecting students. I was a student many years ago, and then now I'm a non-traditional student as a homeowner, and I don't live in your district, obviously.
Could I help you on one thing, just to, just to mention this, so that you don't, it's, and ordinances are for everybody, so even with students living, and it's not just student housing that there are ordinances for and that I have issues. So, I guess what I'm asking is, how do you feel about how ordinances are implemented?
Yes, and...
Yes, and thank you, that was the word I was looking for, thank you. How, how do you think like for ordinances, are they important? Are they a strong part that we need to continue with to implement and make sure that our neighborhoods don't keep tumbling downwards? So the certain areas become the blight?
We definitely need ordinances. And I think, you know, for me, I know as a homeowner, I expect certain things of my neighbors and they can expect the same thing of me. I think it can be hard because there's, there are so many. And to not know what they all are when something is not currently in the news. Just an example for myself, I believe there's an ordinance about your garbage cans not being visible from the street. And I did not know that until I started like trying to look into, making sure I'm following all of the ordinances. So I do understand the importance of them and a lot of times it is about the health and safety of our community. We, we don't want anyone getting hurt or, sorry, lost my train of thought there. So I, I think the ordinances are important. I also, when I say I don't have a lot of knowledge about all of the ordinances, I would say I have faith in my public officials. So I trusted my older person in kind of sharing information that was important for me to know. And I feel that she represented my best interests in speaking to what ordinances we should have.
Thank you, and Will.
Clearly, the ordinances are important and also they are a source of a lot of friction. Because enforcement, you know, people usually are not happy to have enforcement taken against them. But as Brian mentioned, some of the ordinances have to do with safety and there really isn't a lot of room for flexibility on those. I do a lot of walking around downtown in the Fourth District and over towards campus and so on. And I'm really dissatisfied with the maintenance of ice and snow on the sidewalks. So I really wish we could have more, more enforcement of that because that is a severe safety issue. And it really seems like, you know, the closer you get to the university, the more foot traffic there is and the worse the sidewalks are. Other ordinances which might not be quite as critical, you know, that have to do with appearance and upkeep and so on. Well, these are important too, just to maintain the, the character of the community. But these are cases where, you know, probably there should be a warning first. And I don't know how most leases read. I suspect that in a lot of cases, the maintenance is supposed to be up to the person renting. Maybe it would help if not only the landlord but also the occupant were notified when there's a violation.
Thank you. Anything else, Alder? President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome all of our guests. I love it when we have a packed house. And thank you to the candidates and their interest, their time they put into it. This is not an easy thing, so I appreciate you all being here. It reminds me of, as an undergrad, I was invited as an only undergrad to a science symposium. And all of you would have been PhDs ready to tear apart my science project, so. So I'll try to be nice. I'm reading from statute here and, and I'll ask a question after I've read this. It says, this relates to the powers of the common council. It says, except as elsewhere in statutes, specifically provided the council shall have the management and control of the city property, finances, highways, navigable waters, and the public service. And shall have the power to act for the government in good order of the city for its commercial benefit and for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And then it goes on licensing and so on and so forth. The council is all of us sitting here. We work as, we are peers, we are co-equals when it comes to decision-making. But we all bring different strengths to, to the table. We bring different core values to the table. If you could speak to those powers, because they're awesome powers and I love statutes. I'm a policy wonk and I find this so incredibly moving. Because every time I sit here, I know I have this power and it's scary. But it's wonderful and I'm glad and honored to be here. What core values, what one or two core values would you, do you hold as part of who you are that would help you execute this amazing power?
Okay, we'll start with Makira. And then Will, and then Brian.
That sounds like a science project question. Well, I would say one of my core values is just truly a compassion for people. And so in making decisions for the city, I mean, we are a community, we are people. And so that has to be the focus of everything that we do. I would say another of my core values is having facts. And that's really important to me. It's not just operating based on feelings or an impression or what maybe a handful of people are feeling. I know a question was raised earlier about like, do you survey a neighborhood? I mean, that's possible, it's costly, but it's possible. But I would prefer to have facts and information from, you know, subject matter experts who can give information before I would come to conclusions of how best to support the city in decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Will?
One of my core values is respect for individuals. When I worked for the DNR, I also exercised government power and that can be uncomfortable for people. If you meet people with respect and listen to them, it's much easier for you to understand what motivates them. And it's easier to communicate with them and explain to them and help them understand what are the issues that the, the government needs to, or what are the, what does the government need to accomplish in order to make life better for everyone? It's important to remember that every time a governmental body creates an ordinance or a statute or any other such thing, it tends to be taking some freedom away from some person. And so that needs to be done very carefully and with respect and with listening to what the effects will be on people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian?
I guess one of my core values would be, it's no cliche, but don't judge a book by its cover. You don't know where the other people or the persons that are you're helping have been. I try to help out as much as I possibly can. I'm always kind of the underdog. So I guess it's a, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. I guess just going through everything with an open mind, not having prejudgments of what an item or an issue is. Go with it with a free mind, get as much information as I can and then make the best decision I could possibly make.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Swirzke, anything?
Yeah, I guess thank you for, all three of you for taking the time to run for position. I guess the question I have is I would like, like you to name a recent action that the common council that has voted on, that you strongly agree or disagree with. And then another one is, I'd like to just get an idea of maybe something that you would like to see done in the Fourth District.
Okay, we'll start with Will, and then Brian, and then Makira.
One action that the council did not too long ago that had some degree of controversy with it was approving the project with the twin homes on the old Grant School site. And I think that's a very positive thing. I know it, it's going to have some impact on the neighbors. And people generally don't like change, especially if it's close to them. Even if later on they accept it and think it's a good thing. But I think it's very important to bring more affordable housing into the core part of the city. And I believe that project has the potential to do that. Could you remind me the second part of your question, please?
Oh, just maybe mention something that you'd like to see changed or improved or in District Four.
Yeah, it would be nice to see the stormwater drainage improved. I know that there are some, some plans in effect that are going to have some, you know, some benefit in that direction. It'd be nice to eventually see the industrial activities, like the sand storage and stuff, taken out of Buchholz Park and restore all of that area to park use. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian?
I was going to say, he kind of stole my thunder. That project is right down the road from me and it's, it's nice seeing something go in there to see the kids come back. We live right across the street from St. Peter's Middle School. And it's winter time, summertime, it's a joy, you can hear the kids' laughter out there. I'm thankful the church allows children to go on the property and use it as, as long as everything's taken care of. As far as things I'd like to see done around the District Four, my biggest pet peeve is snow plowing, as with most everybody. Especially in front of my house because when the plows go through, some, you know, St. Pete's, they put the snow back into the road. You don't go all the way to the curb, so you're losing about a foot to, to a foot and a half on each side. And then when they come to pick up their kids in the wintertime, it's not safe for the kids because, or even for emergency vehicles, because with cars parked on both sides, you can barely get one single car through there, let alone an emergency vehicle. So I guess I would say, snow plowing is my biggest pet peeve and like sees, you know, changing there.
Thank you. Thank you. And Makira?
So you brought up the stormwater drainage. And one thing I wanted to comment on as far as a, an action by the city council was regarding the redoing of the streets. I live on Sixth Avenue and my street was redone a couple of years ago. I just know in going into that project as a homeowner, I didn't want it done because obviously we couldn't access our home the way we had, we had to park on a side street. The project took a really long time and I knew that we were getting sidewalks. And I had specifically bought that property because it did not have sidewalks and I never want to shovel. So, but I also understood there was a bigger impact to it. And now that we have it, I mean, first of all, it's beautiful. Our street's beautiful, we have this genko tree in our yard. We, this year with all of the melting, we, we almost always have a very damp basement. And this year, for some reason, we didn't. So I am certain it has to do with that project. And I'm very thankful that that was done. So I understand how, as a homeowner, it can be hard to deal with that change and that inconvenience. But I see the long-term benefit of that. As far as what we could have done in the future, I think continuing that project. I know there's more streets to be done and hopefully everyone will have the same benefit of not having so much water in their basements. Thank you, or in their yards, I should say as well.
Thanks. Alder Niebohn?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Wazal and I will thank all of you for, this is like the worst job interview you could ever have. I remember a few of those, so I appreciate your, your patience, your humor, and your, and your honesty and transparency. Mr. Wazal, I learned early on as an urban planner with the city of Dallas that public comments have consequences. Last March, you made a comment on a Facebook page called, you know, you're from Stevens Point, if, where you stated regarding Stanley Street, which you said earlier you opposed. You said, so does this mean that this stupid idea is dead or are the bike police going to force it somehow? Could you identify who the bike police are?
Go up to the lectern.
When I mentioned the bike police, it was just a term of, I guess, the people who wanted the, going down from four lanes to two lanes and then the bike lanes put in there. Like I said, I, yes, I am opposed to reducing that way, that roadway down to two lanes just for, I mean, I understand making it safer, but also put in bike lanes. I guess sometimes when you think back on some, some things, they could have been said differently, but that's the way I said it back in the time.
And then later that year on August 3rd, you said, I've been outspoken on this subject since it came to light as well as voicing my concerns to the worthless city council. Now by that, do you mean all of us are worthless or only some of us are worthless? And if so, which ones of us are worthless?
I was venting, plain and simple. I was dead set against this project from the beginning. And I let my anger get ahead of me. So it's, yes, I did say those comments. It wasn't directed at anybody individually, it was just kind of a blanket statement.
I'd also like to thank you for your service as a firefighter and as a claustrophobic person. I understand completely because I just about had a stroke when I got into that full gear at the Citizens Academy.
I did that a couple of years ago.
Thank you for your service in that regard.
Thank you, thank you. I know some of the people in attendance are here for a class, is that correct? Take note. Take note. Alder Dugan?
I would also add, to express the, what you put online, these are forever.
Alder Dugan?
Indeed.
You have anything?
Yes, I have two and a half questions.
Okay.
For, for each of them. And I too, thank, well, the whole room for being here, this is excellent, and the three of you. Well, it comes back to something Mr. Wazal has said. How would you respond when constituents ask you to vote one way? And after doing research or having someone do it, else do it, the, those people in the profession who have studied this and researched it recommend the opposite position? How would you weigh those two? Are we talking about what your constituents see in a kind of anecdotal way? This is what I see and don't vote that way? Or are we talking about factual information as Makira mentioned? But what would you do? That happens, that happened to me on Stanley Street, so.
And did you want to get to the other one?
Yeah, well, the other one actually is a, is a question about two controversial, potentially controversial issues that could come before the city. Not that we're entertaining them right now. But one of them is, should the city council play a role in raising the wages of the city's working poor? Why or why not? And the other one, should the city government, our government license and inspect rental properties? Why or why not?
Okay, and we start with Brian.
So to your first question, this will kind of hopefully address Alder Jennings when you asked me the question earlier. When we're discussing, say, like if we're going to improve on a park or, you know, something along those lines where it's like beautification or whatever, yes, I'm going to take my constituents' words into consideration when I make a decision, if I make a decision. If we're dealing more with construction and stuff like that, yes, I'm going to listen to the expert in the field versus Jim Jones, who knows nothing about that. I mean, yes, he has opinion about that. And as I've learned earlier with Mrs. Niebohn, sometimes your opinions can shoot yourself in the backside. But yes, in more, the important issues, yes, I'm willing to listen to an expert because that is their field of education. Just like when I was a civil engineer and people told me how to build a road. I appreciate that and I understand it, but this is the way it's going to be. Going to the next point was.
Well, there are a couple of different issues that could come in the future. Do we have any role to play in trying to raise the wages of the working poor? We have about fifty-four percent of the people in this city are considered to be working poor.
That is a good question. I honestly don't know. I could go on both sides where I believe the, you know, we have the state minimum wage and I believe the employers pay their employees a wage. I know all three of my boys work in the, or one works in Wausau, two work here. They're both above minimum wage because they've, they've worked and they gained experience. Do I believe we should jump to the line of fifteen dollars an hour? I think that's going to put a lot of businesses out of business. So I think it's got to be weighed evenly to see how it goes. And then as far as your rental properties are concerned, I believe they should be inspected. Just the same as a hotel or anything else. If I'm paying individual money to stay at their house, I want to make sure it has fire suppression equipment, ways to get out. I want to make sure I'm just as safe in that house as I am at the Holiday Inn.
Okay, thank you, and Makira?
Hi, thank you. Hi, thank you. Um, so for the first question of how to respond when I'm asked to vote a certain way by a constituent, I mean, I can't vote a certain way based on one person's input, I mean, that's, I can take into consideration what they're saying and if I'm hearing it over and over, then obviously it is a concern and how can I best represent what people are bringing to me as that concern? But, I also have to vote based on the data and based on finances and based on what's best for the whole district and really the whole city. It's not just about that one person and what their needs are. Unfortunately, there are situations that something maybe does have a big impact on one person and that's something just ongoing conversations about the greater good of our community. Um, I think as far as increasing wages of the city's working poor, that sounds amazing since we know that minimum wage is not a living wage, um, but we also know, you know, there would be concerns from businesses of the impact that has on, on their bottom line and, um, whether it would attract other business, businesses to come to the community. Um, so I feel that would be a much bigger conversation and research into the impacts that other communities have seen when they've increased the minimum wage. Um, I would be in favor of licensing and inspecting rental properties, um, but again, I feel that needs research too and is, is there really, is it really cost-effective for us to do that, weighing that versus how many safety concerns have been reported because of not having homes inspected? Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Will.
I take a, a lively interest in what is done in my name at the federal, state and local level. I don't have time to thoroughly research every issue that these bodies take up, so I, I feel we have representatives to do the research and to look carefully into the issues within their bailiwick. Um, therefore, it's really up to a body like the City Council to use their best judgment when they make their decisions. Now, if you get a hundred phone calls from constituents in your district and they disagree with the position that you, that you're taking on a question, there must be a good reason for it. Um, and I think that there's probably not so much difference between districts in the city that if, if you get a lot of phone calls from around the city, it would be the same thing. That would mean you'd have to really, really evaluate your position carefully and look to see, you know, am I missing something? But I did go to, I think, two of the meetings regarding Stanley Street. There was a lot of opposition to that and I, my opinion is, it's because people generally don't like change. It seemed to me that the facts were clearly on the side of the road diet and nearly all of the objections I heard, um, were counterfactual. You know, such things as saying, "Well, the fire trucks won't be able to make the turn anymore." But, that's not the case, 'cause the only thing changing was the, uh, the painted lines. Um, and as far as, let's see, as far as licensing rental properties is concerned, um, licensing and inspecting, these would be really good things, uh, it would require a budget, so we'd have to figure out how that would be financed, it would probably be financed through the license fees and you'd have to try to keep those fees reasonable. Um, in terms of mandating a living wage for city residents...
Excuse me, not mandating, but is there a role we can play other than saying fifteen? Because we can't do that.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure the state forbids local governments from mandating a minimum wage. So, frankly, I doubt that there is much of a role. I mean, we could try to encourage businesses to pay people a living wage, but, uh, I doubt that they would really listen to us very hard.
Okay, thank you. Alder Dalton?
Yes, thank you for submitting your interest, three candidates, and, um, the statutes are quite ambiguous on, as to how we make these decisions, so you all have equally valuable and qualified opinions and, and experience to be up here tonight, so I thank you for that. Um, I did a little bit of my own light work because I feel like my thought process for, in lieu of other criteria, is to ask the residents of District Four who they knew what they thought, so I called, tried to call everybody I knew, I knocked on doors of some strangers in your own district to see, see if I knew some, uh, if, what their opinions were and I also heard from my own residents and some other folks in the community one way or another. So, um, my, my question really for you is, since deciding to put your name in, uh, for this, what efforts have you gone, um, and put in as to reaching out to your constituents to try to garner their support for your role here?
Okay, let me start with Makira.
So, I decided to apply for this about a week and a half ago, so it hasn't been like a whole lot of time to, um, connect with a lot of people and, as I said, I'm a student, I'm graduating, but I am getting the wind down of my semester, so it's been hectic. Um, what I did do, I met with, um, outgoing Alder Person Heidi Oberstadt to talk with her about what her role has been on the City Council, talk about how the meetings work, um, just get information on how does she handle when one constituent wants something and other people don't, or, um, just learning about the amount of time that it takes to research each topic. Um, so, that's been the primary, um, focus that I've had, is just getting more of, like, knowing what my role would be physically as far as the time commitment and, um, how much I need to learn. Um, I have met with a few constituents, people have reached out to me, it's been kind of an amazing process, um, and I do know some constituents in my area, obviously I live there, um, but, that, I haven't had much time to connect with people in the community. I will obviously be able to connect through Facebook and the city website and I walk in the neighborhood, I think I will have a different approach as I meet people in being able to say, "Hey, I'm your Alder Person," if I'm chosen.
Thank you. Will?
I also talked with Heidi Oberstadt about the role of Alder Person, got some insight that way. Uh, I haven't talked to my neighbors or other people in the Fourth District specifically about applying to be Alder Person. I talked to several members of the city's staff, I was very impressed with them. Um, I know our Comptroller Treasurer, I've known him for several years, and I talked with Joel Lemke at the Water Department and I talked with Michael Ostrowski, and so I was impressed by our city staff, um, but I haven't made any special efforts, I have to say, to, uh, meet with residents of the Fourth District about this.
Thank you. And Brian.
Well, I, again, also I talked to Heidi after meetings and we conversed through emails back and forth, uh, me asking her questions and answering, so I got kind of the same, you know, issues that you, that you two are having. As far as people in my neighborhood, there are a few people I, I talked to in the neighborhood that I said this is what I was doing and, you know, any concerns or issues, uh, but I did not, uh, I did not go to the outlying, you know, door-to-door and all that. It's, I, there's a lot of, uh, Facebook posts, uh, these were done a lot nicer. And, uh, just reaching out to people in the area. Um, I guess at this time too, it's like, you know, those comments were made, again, out of context and I do apologize for them. Um, you know, looking back, you, you, you think you're invisible sometimes online and now it's coming to light where I wasn't, so, you know, it's, sometimes things that set the heat in the matter that you can't take back and I apologize.
Thank you. Alder Phillips, anything?
Oh, yeah, I got a couple. Um, I thank the rest, the Alder Persons for their questions, pretty immense, everything, the only thing I'm asking and you can do, answer this and I'll ask two questions and you can ask, answer them in either order, any order you want. Uh, are you a Green Bay Packer fan? And who's your favorite NASCAR driver?
Will?
Way, way to go with those tough expressions there, Mike.
I don't know NASCAR, I can't do that.
Well, this is gonna lose me the seat for sure, I'm not a sports fan, so, when I'm a football fan, I'm a Packer fan. Uh, NASCAR driver, Dale Earnhardt Jr., Jr. is actually a alternative punk-type band. That's my favorite.
Brian? Students, you're taking note, right?
Um, to answer your question about Packers, I bleed green and gold. I have, my goddaughter is a avid Aaron Rodgers fan and, um, when he went down with injury last year, she, uh, made him a thank, uh, get well card that we had to mail out to him. Um, so, she is my Packer buddy. Uh, favorite NASCAR driver would be the man himself, Dale Earnhardt Senior.
Makira?
I've heard of NASCAR. And I've been to Daytona Beach. Does that help? I am a Green Bay Packer fan, I've gone to two games and it was miserably cold both times, so I feel that shows my dedication to the team, but I am more of a Spash Football fan. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. It's good to keep people on their toes, isn't it?
I don't know how I could go right after that.
One of my favorite interview questions was, who's your favorite Star Wars character? Alder Morrow?
Okay, um, as an Alder, I know before I was elected, um, you think you know more than you do. That's something that I've learned over and over again, you think you know how things work and once you're in, you find out that's not how really things work. Um, about ninety percent of the votes are easy, it's the ten percent that are really hard. Um, as an Alder, you are elected to rep, to represent the people of your area and also make the best educated, the most ed, most educated, educated decisions to better your area and also the city as a whole. Um, on a heated topic such as, such as, uh, what we've already talked about, Stanley Street, um, you'll, you will often hear from a very few vocal heated folks, um, and you and all, and all you have stated that you will listen to all the P, all of the, can, all the can, all the can, all the constituents in your area. Um, what I would like to know is how will you, how will you determine the true wishes of all of the people that you serve as opposed to trying to cater to the very vocal heated few for the betterment of everybody and for your area?
Okay, start with Brian.
No, are you asking a, how would you get a consensus from the people of the Fourth District in an overall?
No, part of that is, as an Alder, you are elected to listen to your people and also make the best educated decisions that, that you can, because as an Alder, you're also in a position to know how things, to know, to know how things work and how things are also done.
Mm-hmm.
And also to not just work for your business, not just work for your area, but also as the, as the community as a whole.
Okay. I, I guess, and some of the more technical issues, rail construction, uh, housing, stuff like that, I'm gonna base my decision more on the experts who are in that field versus, like I said earlier, someone who doesn't know that field. Constituents can, can voice their concerns as to how they feel about an, an issue, but feeling and actual doing are two different things. It needs to be done for the, the best of the community and you try to explain yourself as best as you can to the people who are against it, hopefully you can, they can see your point of view. Like I said in my opening remarks, I'm not gonna win over everybody, the people are gonna be shouting from the rooftops that I was dead wrong when I believe I was right in the process and sometimes I will go against what the people want, but again, it depends on the, the issue at hand, whether it's more tactical or, or not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Makira?
So you said a lot of times people think that they know more than they actually do and I don't feel that way. I probably know more than I think I do, but I do not come into this with any perception that I have a full picture of what the Council has to, do to make a decision on a topic. Um, I understand dealing with the few heated people and, well, not always just a few, um, can have an impact on how I feel about an issue, but it doesn't mean that it necessarily deters me from the big picture in making a decision, um, in representing the district. I also feel that, uh, not feel, we have a democracy and in reality, if someone is not happy with how I would do my job, there's an election in, next year, in fact, so, um, I feel that is a way that people can say overall that they really aren't supporting the way that you are making decisions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Will?
It's obvious that there's really no way to find out what the district as a whole thinks really on any issue, we don't take polls. Um, if you hear from people who have a heated opinion about some subject, well, the fact that they're interested in the topic means that they have an opinion that really deserves consideration and their points deserve to be looked into and answered. Um, but, we have to make decisions based on the best information we have available, including expert opinions, the judgment of the other Alder people and expert opinions. Um, if I hear from residents who have a heated opinion about some topic, my response would be to go to my neighbors and ask them what they think about the issue, other people I know in the Fourth District, maybe people who've contacted me before about other issues, check with them and see what they think about this particular issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we are through, we do have four speakers, um, who wanna make comments and we will go through those now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to register, um, I was asked to read comments from a constituent from the Fourth District.
Okay.
So, if you would...
We will do that at the end.
I forgot about that, so...
Okay. Okay. Uh, I'll just put you here. Gotcha. Uh, Lynn, up to the lectern please, name and address for the record.
Should I spell my name out as well?
It would be helpful for Paul.
Okay. Uh, my name is Lynn Churro, L-Y-N, last name C-I-U-R-R-O, 2309, uh, Stanley Street. Um, I've never addressed the Council before, so I'm sorry if I miss anything, I don't thank everybody, but thanks Mayor, Alder People, Clerk. Um, I have my two sentences written down because I think it's very important I don't misrepresent how capable, uh, I believe that Makira will be as District Four Alder Person. Um, I live in District Three, but I'm a resident of Stevens Point, I collectively manage a business in District Four, uh, and I recognize that we are only as strong as we can be when we work together. I've worked with Makira, Makira in varying capacities, or varying roles and see the capacity she has to connect with her fellow Stevens Point residents, uh, both in and out of her district. She's a strong force of positive change that I believe that we would be worse off without. Thank you.
Jay?
Thank you, Mayor Wiesa and all the Alders, and I just have to say, um, I have, my, my representative is the most, uh, human up here, I'm just kidding. After nine questions, I'm glad that someone asked something else not so serious. I would be dying. So, um, Chi Moa, uh, address 2949 Minnesota Avenue. I actually don't live in District Four, I live in District Ten, but, um, I live in Stevens Point and I love the city and I love this county. Um, so I've known Makira, um, personally and professionally. I've worked with her, um, on a professional level and I also have done community work with her as well. So, I'm here to speak, uh, in support of Makira. I've watched her step up and take on, um, leadership when needed. Um, you know, we have great people on the Council already, uh, but I know Makira will add to the Council, we need more people like Makira who will listen with her heart and make decisions with the knowledge of visible and non-visible facts and with everyone, especially those most marginalized in mind. Um, and you know, I think just sitting here, uh, listening to her answer the questions, I'm even more convinced now that we need her. Uh, we need people who aren't afraid to admit that they don't know and we need people who are willing to learn and change, so I'm asking, um, all of you to choose Makira for District Four.
Thanks, Jay. Kelly?
Kelly Wills, can you hear me? Uh, 2220 Oxford Court, number one in Plover, actually. So, I'm here again to publicly support my friend Makira in this role. Uh, I think as our last school board election showed, there's... I think as our last school board election showed, there's a real want in our community for our governance bodies to look like the people who live here. And I think it's really important, and this is a great opportunity for this council to elect or appoint someone who can represent a lot of different voices in our community who have been historically not heard. As someone who works at the university, this is one of the issues that we have time and time again, is making sure that a lot of different voices are heard in this process. And so again, I'm so impressed for someone who maybe doesn't have the confidence to think that they can do this, listening to her answer your questions. She blew the pants off me. I hope I would have the same thing on your end as well, but in her role as social worker, her want to to serve her community, she has a long line in terms of what her resume can look like, but also her particular background as well. So thank you for considering my support for Makira.
Thank you. Danny?
Name's Danny Werhowski, last name W E R A C H O W S K I, 200A Washington Avenue. So I am a resident of District Four. I just want to say, since this is an interesting appointment, and it's not an election for the actual residents of District Four, that I implore any one of the three candidates that are appointed to please seek feedback out from the residents of District Four. I know I have friends that are fathers and mothers and have families in the district and live right near the river where I do, but I also have fellow peers who are working poor and and those that I don't know, but I know it's a very diverse district. So I'd implore you to find diverse ways to reach out, and then good luck at the next election cycle.
Thank you. Okay, President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking today on behalf of Trevor Rourke. He's a Fourth District resident. He lives at 601 Washington Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin, 5448. He forgot the one. Pointing that out.
Everybody knows Trevor here.
Because he's probably going to to watch this. Trevor, you forgot something, and that's very unusual for him. But he had reached out to me as council president to read on his behalf. It says, Dear President Johnson, thank you for your consideration to read my letter. I cannot attend tonight, but thought it important to share my support for Makira Zarazua. Did I say that correctly? I hate it when people mispronounce my name, so I want to try to honor your name.
Chaz is not that smart.
No. But my name is not Melissa, and people still want to do that. So I try to honor people by pronouncing their names correctly. To become the Fourth District alder, I recently met Makira and learned a lot more about her long history in Stevens Point and the passion that she would bring to the table as city of city council. Makira has a desire to help people, to help her neighbors, friends, and family live a better life, one with more opportunity and access. With her local experience in social work and mostly helping those with differing abilities, it's obvious to me that Makira cares deeply about our community, bringing about access and resources to some of the most marginalized among us. Further, she has a degree in political science from UWSP and has returned for a second degree. Are you crazy? To further her career and her lifelong passion to help others. Even though I know that Will is a good candidate as well, nod, I think Makira's experience and passion will speak volumes. She would be a great choice to represent the Fourth District here in Stevens Point, and I hope to call her my alderperson. Thank you for your consideration, Trevor Rourke.
Okay, thank you. I also had two contacts. One was supporting Mr. Stites, and the other one was supporting Makira. So take that for what you will. That's kind of all I got.
Okay.
All right, so I will ask the comptroller treasurer to come up, and the city clerk. Once again, you will be handed a paper ballot. Does everybody have a pen? Anybody with out a pen?
We'll share.
Okay.
We'll share.
Fair enough. Okay, and what you will do is you will write your last name on the ballot, and then the person who you wish to vote for to represent the Fourth District through the rest of this year till the next election in April of 2020. The clerk and treasurer will then collect the ballots. Apparently Cory forgot one, too. And they will then read those ballots, and I'll have you do that at the lectern, I guess. There is a slide thing that that pulls out, so you can see, put the ballots there, and I'll have you read the ballots once those are done. If there is a majority winner with the first round of voting, that person will be sworn in as alderperson right after this meeting. If there is not a majority, the person with the lowest votes will be eliminated, and we will vote again. Thank you, John. Cory, can we get you over by the lectern and call out the votes and keep tally?
Vote for Will Stites.
Okay.
You want that alder name?
Name, I believe that's what the state statute requires, so.
Will Stites by Mike Phillips.
Okay, one vote Phillips.
Oh, Stites.
No, one vote Stites.
Next vote, Makira Zarazua.
Okay.
Alder Morrow. Next vote, Makira Zarazua, Polly Dalton. Next vote, Zarazua by Daniel Shore, Alder Shore. Will Stites, Mary Niebon. Will Stites, Tori Jennings. Makira, Alder Johnson. Makira Zarazua, Alder Slawinski. Will Stites, Kathy Dugan.
Oh, boy.
And Will Stites, Alder Niebel.
Okay. Yep, I have five Makira Zarazua, five for Will Stites.
Well, you know, I guess it's a little ironic because I'm the only one up here who's a resident of the Fourth District.
I would like to say a point of order. I don't think that this is really a laughing matter. You know, it's the election of a representative. Thank you.
This is a this is a tough call.
It is. Serious matters still can have a degree of levity.
Flip McQueen.
Would it, Logan?
I'm listening.
Would, oh, okay, sorry. Would it be appropriate to ask for a second round of voting before deciding to break the tie? Or is that not allowed?
I think not only would that be permissible, that's what you would need to do, the the sort of ground rules that were established without objection were that you would conduct a round of voting, and that unless, or even if somebody had a majority, I believe you said, that the lowest vote getter would be eliminated, and there'd be a second vote?
We did say that. So I guess that would be appropriate, then. I would choose then to, at this point, not break the tie and ask for a second round of ballots to be cast.
Okay.
Give ourselves some time. I don't know if that is going to change anything.
Yeah. I'll buy us some time to think about it.
With those two.
With those two, your choices are now Makira or Will Stites.
This isn't so secret, why don't you just raise your hand?
Hope it wasn't because there's too much wine.
Just think about that.
Well, Alder Phillips, I'm going to answer your question, because if you see my hand go up for a certain one or the other, that may influence your vote. By having people write them down, we take away that variable.
We do all at one time.
I'll do it at one time. He's always got a good answer.
Will Stites, Mike Phillips. Makira, Alder Johnson. Makira, Alder Dalton. Makira, Alder Morrow. Makira, Alder Slawinski. Will Stites, Alder Dugan. Makira Zarazua, Alder Niebel. Will Stites, Tori Jennings. Makira Zarazua, Alder Shore.
Okay, so then we have a total of six for Zarazua, four for Stites.
Congratulations, Makira. You have been selected to represent the Fourth District. Makira, you will be sworn in immediately. And I'd ask that we'll set up a time to have you come down to City Hall tomorrow and get some things squared away, please. Thank you all very much for not only putting yourself up for consideration for representing the Fourth District, but for showing up. That says a lot, so I appreciate it.
I think this was particularly helpful for the students to see democracy in action.
I think they took the short agenda for their class.
I think they thought it was a short agenda.
They're like, whoa.
This was, I mean, you got a lot to write about.
All right, before we swear in our newest alderperson, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at 6:58.